This conference will now be recorded.
All right, so it being 104 calls meeting of the Trump School Committee to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
United States of America.
To the Republic. And.
For our nation, our God, invisible liberty.
Living in justice for all. It's on the agenda, so I think.
I forgot about that.
That's okay. All right, so this meeting. The this meeting will be recorded and posted at the Charles for Public Schools website for interested community members to access and watch string community members to make comments either through email to myself or to Dr. Lang. All right, so. Some public comment, I did get a couple emails, so I'll just read those into the meeting. So Susan McKinnon, who was a former early childhood education teacher, just wanted to remind us that it's very difficult for younger children and children with special needs to learn by just watching a video. So just keep this in mind and encourage us to use a variety of resources to keep the students engaged as we're developing plans or continuing to educate. Hannah Barker wanted to recognize all the hard work that was being done by the staff and administration. She also wanted to mention that all these changes that are occurring couldn't happen without the cooperation and collaboration with the union. She also wanted to mention that her children have been contacted by some of the teachers, and they're very appreciative of those teachers reaching out, even if it's just to check in with the students. Final thing she wanted to do is just emphasize that whatever plans that we were going to come up with, that they still try to maintain the social distancing recommendations that are in place. The final public input that I received is Ms. Laura Georges wanted to just ask to see if there were any plans going to be in place to support students with IEPs if this were to go beyond three weeks. So anybody else have any public input that they received? Okay, all right, so we will go to new business then.
I'm sorry, I did get a text from somebody.
Yeah.
Being what what our plans are. So like people will be watching this meeting.
Okay, great. So I'll turn it over to Jay for new business.
Sure, thank you very much, everyone. Well, I talked to Dennis about sometime last week, and when all the school closures started being talked about in Massachusetts and even across the country a little bit, different meetings had been canceled and offices have been closed. So we said, you know, in the event that they were ever were school closures but government closures, and we weren't able to meet, not that I anticipate a lot of heavy business being conducted remotely, but that we should actually test and try like a go to meeting type format so that we could get together, we could still, even if we couldn't come together in the same space, we could share information with the public. If it weren't live, at least be able to post to our website so that people can see what's happening and receive updates pretty periodically about what's happening with the schools. So I just want to let you know today, just a couple of updates for you. A week ago, actually, a week ago today, we made the decision with a lot of other local area superintendents to close schools for two weeks. So we originally sent a message home with staff and students last Friday afternoon indicating we were going to be out for a two week closure. There wasn't really clear and concise directive coming from the state at that point in time. We were participating on a lot of phone calls, a lot of conference calls, and it was really kind of a hodgepodge of recommendations and who was doing what. So after one of the calls, I know particularly the Merrimack Valley Superintendent and the Superintendent's Association kind of north of 128 got together, they had to be able, what, 40 or 45 districts. And we said, we really, as a group, think we need to do something and have there be some consistency in our messaging and what was actually happening school wise. So we got together and actually said we were going to do a two week closing beginning this past Monday. Last Sunday, the governor had a press conference and announced, actually, he was going to implement a three week closure statewide. I think that issue would have been helpful if it had come earlier, and I wonder if because a lot of the other districts started to close on their own, they wanted to try to have some uniformity statewide, they went with a across the board three week closure. So I have no problem with that. I do think that if we're going to get ahead of this curve and try to limit the spread of the coronavirus, it's going to take actions like this to be able to to do so. In all of my communications with parents and staff, we've really been pushing the, you know, the good hygiene, you know, constant washing of hands, trying not to touch your face, things along those lines to just control the spread of germs within our buildings. Obviously, we perform deep cleaning and different things like that during the regular flu season. So those efforts ramped up a little bit anyway, because it was flu season, the winter season. So that was ongoing. But then we also, in the last couple of communications, really started to push the whole social distancing directives, so not congregating in groups, not having big public meetings. I think over the course of the day, the governor's direction was, you know, no, no groups bigger than 250 should congregate at the same time. And then again overnight, it dropped to 25. And that's when you saw him take some pretty drastic action, even with the closure of, you know, restaurants and bars and things like that last weekend. So I do think statewide, people are taking this very seriously. I think we want to do our part and stay ahead of it. And we obviously were spending this week planning for a two week closure, but pretty quickly switched into a minimum of a three week closure. So just so you can know the messaging that I have shared with the public, a couple of community messages, I typically forward those to the school committee as well, just so that you can see the messages that are going out. I think they've been well received. We utilize Connect Ed for all of our families, but then we always post our messages on Facebook, and we've been trying to link to the district account to just push the message to residents who don't necessarily have students in the school system so that they can see how we're responding. I'm going to keep up probably with at least a weekly message to families in the community. And then we're obviously going to be letting the staff know district wide, across the board recommendations and guidance and individual principals and department coordinators are starting, actually yesterday, to reach out to staff and talk about what this extended school closure is going to look like to try to bring some normalcy during a very difficult time for our students and families. We realize that, you know, the schedules are thrown off, service delivery is thrown off, learning is thrown off, so we're trying to to get back on on board as as quickly as we can. So communications will continue to come. There still is a little bit of an unknown. Again, we originally were coming out for three weeks, which would have us be closed through April 6th. The recent calls this week at all levels, so whether it was a superintendent call and assistant superintendent call, even the business call that I just left a couple of minutes ago, they really do want us now preparing for a longer closure in the event that that happened. So internally, we're starting to also plan for a closure through the end of April, which I think you've seen a couple of districts already kind of jumped to statewide. And then while it's not being talked about right now, I think, you know, there is a possibility, and you've seen a couple of states actually cancel school through the rest of the school year. So I don't think that that's something that we can ignore, or we do need to plan for that as well. So we really have kind of three phases of planning taking place internally now, your three week closure, your closer through the end of April, and then even a schoolwide closure for the rest of the school year, if it came to that. So what I plan to do again is to update the community, update you, obviously, with kind of where we're at. We are looking at this as a three week closure right now. What I've told staff is that this first week, we're kind of treating like snow days so that if we do go back to school, there are a couple of days that are going to get tacked on to the end of the school year because we weren't at our limit yet. But that, you know, Linda and her group did send out a communication with regard to different enrichment activities kids can be doing from home, different, you know, websites and curriculum tools that we already use. So we've been pushing that this week. We met with the union on Wednesday. Again, they've been very cooperative at this time. I think everyone acknowledges this is not the norm. This is unprecedented, and we need to work together to be flexible and realize that there's just, these are different times and that we need to provide, you know, continued services to our student population, particularly our, some of our needy students. So we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit later on. But that planning is underway as we internally look to week two of this closure. What we're going to be doing is actually reaching out to staff because they did leave last Friday with relatively short notice. So we are going to be opening up the buildings a little bit next week, Monday and Tuesday, so that staff can come in and get some resources if they need to bring home with them. We're going to send that messaging directly to staff to try to coordinate with them. If the staff needs additional technology to be able to work remotely, we'll work to get that for them. And then we're also going to be having, if it hasn't happened already, the staff members will be reaching out to their students, checking on them, finding out if there are different needs that they may have during this outage to provide possible technologies or any kind of home learning tools that they will need. Our teachers are going to be participating in remote meetings similar to this with their school administrators, with their department coordinators, with their colleagues to kind of talk about where they're at. There's a human piece of this as well, to really support each other during this time, and I think try to keep some consistency consistency in their lives as well. So that will all be rolling out next week. Again, I think that's where you're going to see staff start to more directly contact the kids in their rooms and start to to make those contacts again. And then as we gear up for week three, and I'll be able to give you kind of a better update Tuesday night at the meeting about kind of what three and beyond will look like because we're hoping to have a better sense by next week of are we really considering coming back on the sixth, or is this going to get pushed out to the end of April, at least in the short term? And then, you know, what does a full week plan look like? So Linda and staff in the district are working around the clock really on this. There's a lot of work taking place that people don't see behind the scenes. I'm very appreciative of the staff and all the time that they're putting in, whether it's onsite or remotely, to try to help us through this, through this time.
Any questions anybody has at this point?
No, just with regard to staff returning to the building, will they have to schedule a time to come back in, you know, each staff person?
Yeah, what's going to end up happening is they will receive a communication from their principal likely this afternoon, if not this afternoon, tomorrow morning, that's designate specific hours, probably by grade level of or department of when to return to the school, just so that we can actually be able to triage and help the groups that say we want to keep the group small and manageable. So that will be going out. It won't be just like an all call. People will be assigned different times when they can come.
Thank you.
Have there been any? Yes. Have there been any plans for providing technology to students who don't have access to it?
Yeah, so that's in the works as well. What we really want to take care of Monday and Tuesday is making sure all of our staff have the necessary technologies that they need to be able to communicate remotely. So that'll be part of the plan as far as them coming to the school if they need to get any supplies, if they need any additional technology so that they have that. And then one of the things I think we're going to do at this point in time, we have a conference call a little bit later on this afternoon, but when our staff make contact with their kids, almost kind of have a screening tool that they'll use to identify if the child needs any kind of technology or resources at home so that we can make the provisioning of that towards the middle and end of next week. So our goal next week. I'm sorry.
I do want to let you know that, like what Hannah Barker said, some of the staff have already reached out to the students, and that's been truly appreciated by us. So I do want to say that.
Yeah, there's, there's actually been a lot of staff who already have reached out on their own even before we started to coordinate the effort, which is great because I think a lot of the kids just like, again, to hear the the voices that they normally hear during the school day. So that has been fantastic. So that'll be ongoing. And my personal goal is next week, you know, kind of take care of the staff needs Monday and Tuesday. Staff are then also going to be, you know, starting to get some training, professional development meetings, get back into the swing of things, being taken care of student technology needs and access needs towards the middle and end of the week so that we're really ready to kind of fully launch something for week three. But it will begin in spurts next week, and it already actually has, so that we're not going to stop anything that's already taking place, but just to have some more consistency and uniformity around, you know, what are the student expectations, what are staff expectations, you know, what is a day going to look like? That will all be being rolled out next week.
Have any, have any decisions been made about MCAS and all that at the state level?
No, again, that's rolling out slowly just because of the timeframe involved. The only thing that we we did know is that the 10th grade MCAS obviously was scheduled during this outage, so we know that that will not take place during those dates. At this point, the DOE is still just working on the three week closure status. So they're basically just bumping dates of of assessments. But I would think that if we end up going to a longer closure than just these three weeks, they're going to have to make some some action on that front. I do know that they are looking at filing legislation to allow for that either to be bumped or canceled outright for the spring as part of a package of different reliefs that they're going to hopefully grant school districts.
I just want to make sure too that we're providing support for the staff. I mean, this is, as a teacher, I can say this is a wild time, you know, trying to figure out how to do a type of teaching that, you know, we've really never done before. And, you know, having everything come to a screeching halt like it did last Friday, to be really wholly unprepared in terms of having the resources, materials, emotionally, all of those things for this has been incredibly stressful. So I do want to make sure that we're taking care of our staff as well.
Linda.
Thank you. I'm raising my hand nicely. Couple of things, just so you know, the president did announce that the Department of Ed is not going to enforce standardized testing. So what that looks like at the state level is a different story, but that's what's happening at the federal level. He just announced that today. And to just talk a little bit with Donna saying, I think the conversations I know I've been having with the other administrators includes the fact that this is going to be tough, and we want them to just teach. So we want that message to go out super clear that it's going to be okay, there's going to be people at different stages, we're here to help each other out. Think of it, it's like pilot, because we love to use that word pilot, but we're going to have to build this and sail it at the same time, and that we just want people to teach. We're not going to be worried about enforcing, you know, rules and regulations. We'll take care of grades as we go along this will give us a little bit of time to really be thoughtful and try and find out what the barriers are, and then what actually works, and then how we can all support each other. And and we're talking even like cross buildings, you know, we have some high school teachers that are well advanced with some of these tools that we're using. How awesome would that be if they were maybe running a PD session for the elementary school teachers? So this is just going to take some time, and it's, it's actually what we've all probably wanted in our, in our teaching career, like, wouldn't it be great to plan this and have the time to do it? Well, it's here. So let's see what comes of it. And I'm, I'm hopeful that some really great things are going to come from this, and, you know, we're going to be able to access a lot of students that maybe perhaps needed to be targeted at that point. So I'm, I'm excited, but I just wanted to let you know what the, what was just said by the president.
John or Jeff, any questions before?
Just one quick question. So on my side, so how are we receiving information from individual teachers combined? Have we talked about, or have you talked about maybe centralizing some kind of information portal on its CPS website or something that's publicly accessible by grade level? So all those resources are centralized because we're getting them off in ones these twosies. And it depends, I have a different response rate from between the two kids, right? So it's pretty inconsistent, and that's pretty much what I've, what I've heard from other parents as well. And I think centralizing a lot of those resources somewhere that one place people can go to look those things up might be useful.
Yeah, what I can say to that, John, and then Linda can jump in in a second. We did provide a district wide email to families with links by grade level to appropriate kind of enrichment activities and resources. I think it went out this past either Tuesday or Wednesday. So I can reforward that to you, and that is, I believe, linked on our website. I can make sure that it's very prevalent off the the first page. I do know that there are individual teachers, and again, I think they're reaching out to kids at a inconsistent rate right now, but I think a lot of that is going to be rolled out or worked out next, early next week when there's some clarity around, you know, what are the student expectations, what are the staff expectations for communication? So I would say if you can give us a day or two on that, I think you're going to start to see some more consistency. But district wide, there was one particular set of resources that went out for, you know, arcade for our five to eight and our nine to 12 students. So we can push that again, if you'd like, just to make sure that people do see that. Oftentimes, individual teachers in individual classrooms might have something that they're working on with the students or a particular app or something that they're using that wouldn't be consistently used across all grade levels or all schools. So you might have seen something along those lines, just with one of your particular children. But district wide, there are some resources, and we can push that again.
Okay, because I'm looking back on the on Tuesday and Monday, and I don't see it. So and I'm on.
School committee, it went to the parents.
No, no, my personal email, I'm a parent. I'm just saying that you're, all I'm saying is we just need to make sure the information gets out and gets out often. That's all.
I didn't.
I don't. I'm looking at it right now.
I just want to let you know, for you, it might be in your emails, I did receive connected, and it had those by grade levels. So I remember seeing that. But it, when you look at it, I think what you're talking about is a portal, which is very nice, where you can go in for the different elementary, middle school, high school level. It would be really nice to have that portal where everybody can put up their plans and maybe arrange to have consistently, this will be the plan for grade one today, this is for grade two, grade three.
I can talk about that because we're going to have, it was, we use Google Classroom, and that is one of the things that when we've been trying to make these plans, I said, if teachers do send them to, you know, watch this video, read this document, whatever all those things are, everything has to be housed on Google Classroom. So for example, especially if you're asynchronous, like, so if we're not expecting kids to be on it exactly this time, if you don't log on till, say, I don't know, two o'clock for one of your classes, and maybe there was some information put out, the student and the parent will be able to look at that Google Classroom of that teacher and be like, oh, okay, I was supposed to read this, I need to watch this video. Oh, I'm supposed, maybe there might be a video from the teacher of a flip classroom. So whatever it is, all going, that was the one, like, I call it a rule, one rule that I had is that everything has to go through and be housed on Google Classroom so that students aren't getting an email from this teacher, some type of an app response from this teacher, someone else just made a phone call. We can't have it all hap hazard like that. So everything will be on that platform because that is our platform.
All right. Jeff, do you have a question before we?
I have no, I'm also, I just wondered if Linda can send a platform so I can get the camera to work on this so you can all see me, but.
I'll be right over.
Donnie had a question?
More of a comment, I think the other thing too, and maybe we'll be discussing this further down the agenda, is I think we have to be careful not to overwhelm parents, you know, I mean, this is, it's, they're not, it's, the kids aren't at school, the parents don't have the materials and the resources necessarily to be able to, you know, help the kids. I mean, they may be taking care of other kids, they may be working from home. And I just want to be careful that we're not inundating the parents with expectations or information that is making this even more stressful than it already is.
Just a couple quickly, John, just in terms of the resourcing, it's right on the main webpage of the, of the district, if you go to that, you'll be able to find it there.
The larger point I'm trying to make is we have to make sure everybody is getting the information. I'm not the only one that hasn't seen it, and I know because I've been asking other parents. So I get what you're saying, I'm just, my point is we need to make sure the information is easily accessible and that everybody's getting it. It's not about me specifically, it's about a whole lot of parents that haven't seen enough information. So that's all, my wife probably got it, I just didn't, and I get the CPS updates, so.
Can I just, I, I think that we have different students at different levels with different exposure to the use of technology in our system. We've got fifth graders and ninth graders who are very used to this because they've been using it all year long. We don't, we might not have everybody else who's at that level, because I can tell you right here also that mine, who are 10th graders, are looking forward to having more things to do and having more standardized things to do. And some of their teachers did give them work already. So they're working on those things. The other thing is that our own students can be tremendous resources here, and I think that if if teachers and everybody could keep that in mind, you've got a technology center, especially to the TV group, the technicians are amazing at the high school level. So that's another group that might be able to help quite a bit, and all the technicians that you've got that have been dealing with getting us on to the computer at those grade levels. So just to keep that in mind, but as far as what we've gotten so far, I did see that email, I did see the links, they were there, I didn't go to the website to make sure it was on the website.
Okay.
My phone is not working, but may I ask a question? This is Sharon.
Yeah, Sharon, can you hold on one minute, please?
Yeah, good, Jay.
Before we start of the meeting, Dennis, we were supposed to have taken a roll call of the president, and we forgot about that. Would you mind doing that? Then we'll continue.
So, Donna? Maria? John? Jeff?
Here.
Me, here. Do we need to do other people that are in the meeting as well?
No, we can, we'll just have the record reflected, myself, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, Hirsch, and Joanna Johnson Collins, our business administrators here as well. I don't know if Sharon.
It's just a really quick question, Dr. Lang, for you. You alluded to our meeting Tuesday night, I'm just trying to verify that that will be the same format as the meeting we're having right now.
Let's maybe talk about that at the end of this meeting. Okay.
I might get this later, any special plans in place for students that have special needs or on IEPs? I know that's a difficult topic.
Right, no, and think there's actually, and I have to say, like statewide, all of you different groups are really trying to come together on this. So you have superintendent groups that are meeting consistently and talking about issues. You have assistant superintendent groups who are taking a look at, you know, all of you different curriculum instructional, who are in instruction matters. There was a business officials call today to kind of figure out what are some of the issues that might happen to us, you know, finance wise or operationally during this time period. And then the sped administrators, the sped staff, and even the collaboratives, like we're a member of Valley Collaborative, they've been having kind of regional roundtables to talk about the implications on all of the different groups. So at this point in time, yes, there is talk going on about, you know, how we're going to really support all of our learners as we embark on this. We do realize that there's some student populations that are going to be easy to integrate and to to continue to provide services to, and there are going to be some that aren't. It's, it's just kind of factual at this point. But the, I'm hoping the, the next time that we actually get together, I can have a more broader update for you by all the different groups and kind of what we're doing. But it is, it is, I mean, if you think about it from, even from a special ed standpoint, they're like, let's say, speech and services. I could see speech services continuing remotely, using a similar platform like this so that services could still be delivered. I can see some small group instruction being scheduled and delivered. But it's going to be very difficult, there's some programming for us of separate programs, our life school students, our autism spectrum students, it's, it's going to be difficult, and I think that's what's trying to be worked out right now.
All right, any other questions at this point? Andrea?
Can I ask?
No.
How about EL, what are you doing on the, is it, are those classes just meeting regularly? Because it's a small subset of students in each school. How does that work?
Linda, do you want to talk a little bit about the work that Kelly's doing?
Yeah, so right now, nobody's meeting, obviously, because we're in that work, in that, in the, obviously, the planning stage. The goal is, and I have a working document that will be, where all the administrators are looking at right now, making adjustments. We're going to be discussing like everyone's specific role. So where's the EL teacher in this distance type learning environment, a special ed teacher? If, I mean, all the way down to if, you know, if you're the clerk, the this, like, we need to know what everybody's role is going to be. So, and even our interventionist, so Kelly and I have talked about what their roles should look like, how they're going to reach out to their students too, because they'll be a good resource as teachers are reaching out to parents, and maybe they don't feel comfortable having a conversation, and there might be a language barrier, or some of our more needy families between our guidance counselors and our L teachers and our sped teachers, they're going to work collectively with the classroom teachers, and how they're going to provide activities, how they're going to meet with classes. Some of them have like a class, like they have a class list with them, so they would have a Google Classroom to help organize those assignments and activities that students are going to do that they're logging on to. Some of the other logistics that we're working on too is just when our kids do this, how long are we, what kind of a schedule is it going to look like? Because to Donna's point, you know, we can't tax the families, we don't know what they have, how often they have it, we're asking them to act as a coach, we don't know what what their capacity is. So they're going to work really close together to make sure that what we're asking kids to do is simple, right? Simple, keep the education going, keep them engaged, give them things that they, you know, would be really excited to do. So the L teachers will be a huge factor in that, as well as special ed and our school counseling. So the L teachers will be a huge factor in that as well as special ed and our uh, school counseling.
Okay, any notices that you sent out regarding access to uh, either the educational tools or to the actual classroom? You have to also send that out in Spanish. Uh, but but I don't know how they can translate into their own language. So we do have to add a minimum provided in Spanish.
Yeah, ma- minimum is Spanish. And when we send out connecteds, we can send it in multiple languages because we have that. Like, that's the main thing. It's hard to get into. So for example, that that infograph that went out about the lunches, that's not going to get translated. Like I, we had to hand translate that and because it's a, it's a picture, right? You know, it's not going to be, but that's where our L teachers will come into play to help parents navigate through some of those nuances where they can't access something that's going to be uh, automatically translated for them because it's just basic writing, paragraph writing. Um, and then we'll get through that. And that happens now, like even if we weren't in this situation, that's what their role is. Um, currently with their students is to help them navigate. And they have been reaching out. I mean, we have not given any directive to teachers to do things, but just this is what they do, right? This is what they were trained to do. So they're reaching out um, where they can, where they feel comfortable. We're going to have to. Part of our plan for next week is PD sessions, right? What are the basics? What do you need to know? Do you even know how to click and open up a Google Classroom? Are you advanced? Do you want to use some of the G suite tools? Um, how we use like at the high school, some teachers have not tapped into ed nudity. We'll have hall sessions on that and that will be ongoing. But next week, we're going to take the time to plan and have everybody work at the, you know, what's the basics, what are the have tos, and then launch it and see what happens, right? And then, and if we're out, obviously for a longer period of time, we'll just keep doing, you know, the PD and uh, sharing materials. That's why I want the message to be super clear that it's okay, you're gonna, there's things are going to work and things that are not going to work. We're not going to be trying to be all super compliant. We're just trying to provide an education for students who just just teach. Imagine that. I always feel like uh, in this tragedy, what an exciting thing to happen, like we can do what we're all trained to do, teach.
Yeah, I agree with you, Linda, but in terms of the EL part, it's just um, they're an extra or they're the the hoop of teachers is there to help. They they don't need to, you know, it's not like having you come in session one, session two, session three. Um, so they're an extra in many ways. So I don't know how that's going to be incorporated, but whatever it is, I'm sure you'll plan it out. Uh, all I want to make sure is that the message gets out, at least in that minimum language that is required. Um, and in addition that people know they can translate it or they can reach out and get a translation um, so that they know what to do with the kids. Okay, that that's it.
Yeah, the the teachers are very um, the the L teachers, a a lot of them are, they're very.
Amazing people.
Yeah, they 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 cover those kids. Like beyond this situation, they're doing more than what they would do just in their position. So and Kelly's completely on top of that. So yeah, she's the first one, like, did this get translated? Do you need me to send it out? Like she, she reminds me, you know, when when I do forget, because we do forget things. Um, we have another uh, safety net with Kelly at least overseeing it, and she's also working with those teachers to get them. So I have full confidence that those teachers really have the skill level to support the kids no matter what the situation's going to be with our educational um, delivery.
I agree with you that we have a tremendously great group. Um, I just uh, want to make sure that they have the support from the entire district in terms of getting the message out. So thank you.
All right, anybody else? Jay, anything?
Not on that.
Okay.
Um, so if we move down the agenda, just the second item was just status of events. Um, and this is something basically we're on hold at this point. So uh, in my last communication to parents, um, we just expressed that uh, all, you know, Chelmsford Public School sponsored events um, are canceled or postponed through um, August 6th. That included any events that were taking place on Chelmsford Public School uh, properties that were either being conducted uh, by Chelmsford Public School staff, uh, outside rental uh, organization groups. Um, we just had to shut things down for at least three weeks. Personally, I do see that being extended um, soon, uh, likely through the end of April vacation. Uh, just because I'm not concerned as much about school events. Everyone realizes school events are closed or canceled. Um, but we do have a lot of outside groups that come and use our either gyms or auditoriums or cafes. And um, scheduling becomes an issue. So I am uh, considering next week, depending on the news we get from the state, uh, likely pushing out cancellation of those uh, activities through the end of April, just to allow for um, cancellations, those groups to reschedule if they even can. Um, but what we're going to do is uh, work and refund um, uh, deposits and things along those lines because it's, it wasn't obviously in anyone's um, control that this uh, that this happened. But I just want to um, again, kind of get out there early and be a little proactive on canceling those so that people can uh, reschedule if they need to for later in the year or over the summer or the fall. Everyone's been very good about that. I really haven't received any uh, any pushback.
And MIA pushed spring sports till the end of April.
That was a little surprising because usually they um, they're not as proactive. Um, so you, they usually go like a week or two at a time, but they they came out last um, I think it was Monday or Tuesday. And they voted to uh, not even start spring sports until I think it's Monday, the 27th of April, which would be the day we get back from vacation. That actually would be the first official day for tryouts. And then to have a condensed spring season that would end around June 10th. Um, so that's going to be really tight if they uh, if they're even able to do it. Um, but I was I was happy to see that just so the people can plan accordingly.
Donnie had a question?
Um, yeah, are we um, thinking about uh, you know, as we uh, approach the end of the year, what are we going to do about some of these activities? I mean, I know that sometimes they require, you know, up to 30 or 60 days notice, you know, cancellation so that uh, you know, that people can get their refunds. And I'm not talking about people that will be using our facilities, but I'm, I'm talking more about any activities that we may have planned that are offsite where we're renting facilities.
Yeah, um, I mean, the the short answer on that is yes, we're kind of collecting a list by school of what um, what type of commitments they've made. Um, we obviously can track very easily any of the out of state or overnight trips that were planned. Uh, but even like towards the end of the year, uh, field trips and things along those lines. Um, a lot of deposits to do for them. Uh, so we have the schools putting together a list for us of exactly what the event was, when it was, what's been paid, what's to be paid, uh, things along those lines so we can make some decisions. Uh, there's going to become a point in time, like even high school related, this is a really, this is tough for everyone, but I really do particularly feel bad for the seniors at the high school because this is affecting a lot of their senior activities. Um, you know, the prom is in question, graduation will be in question at this point. Um, I was actually shocked to see as many universities already canceling their commencement services for later in the spring. So as much as we don't like to talk about it, these things are um, uh, possible, depending on the status of um, events statewide. And there are significant financial uh, payments that are due to like, say, the prom venue to the song is for graduation, things along those lines. Um, we need to be uh, paying attention to that and probably sooner than later sometime in April. Um, making some decisions about the viability of those events and um, and how we want to move forward with them. But we're we're in a compiling mode at this point, just to see exactly what what our liabilities are and and I will bring that to uh, to you at a future time to talk about.
Well, I do think it's important for people to remember that this is not necessarily a district decision, but something that, you know, we're basing off of what the governor's recommendations are. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, there's some things that we have control over, uh, but like then some things with like this governor uh, situation, it's out of our control.
That's what I mean.
The governor comes and says for three weeks, uh, you know, we're closing all schools and bars and restaurants or whatever. We don't have local control to reopen.
Right.
It would be a situation where if there is no directive from the state and then it's left to a local municipality, we might be of the way in. Um, but if the governor ends up coming out and saying, you know, schools are closed through the end of April or schools are closed for the rest of the school year, and you can't congregate in groups of big uh, bigger than 25 at any time, that takes the decision making right out of our hands.
Right.
I just want to protect our financial interests so that we're not over um, extending ourselves to be able to get refunds and uh, things back.
No, and I I completely agree with that. I just want to make sure that, you know, that that uh, you know, staff and and families understand that. You know, at this point, the decisions that we're making are based on what the governor has been telling us to do.
Right. Well, we we did make the decision on our own to cancel the two weeks.
Yes.
And the governor's decision kind of even overrode that to go to the three. Um, so yeah, these decisions are not in our control at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions on events?
Can I make a comment on events? I know that people are, I I've heard from many people, in terms of seniors, concerned about the end of the year. But um, just like Linda said, in terms of teaching and the opportunity that this presents, this is the same thing for this particular class. This is one of a kind. It's very unique and it could be that they have one of the best memories ever uh, and very unique memories if we make it so and help them to make it so. Um, so there could be a very bright side to this. We'll have to see. How it all pans out.
I agree. Um, if we shift gears to um, some of the work uh, that we've been doing and really focusing on this past week um, was around setting up just uh, some of the kind of the health and welfare uh, needs for our students. Um, so I, we don't often talk about this, but and I don't know that the community really gets the gravity of the numbers that we're talking about. Um, but we have uh, between eight and 900 students in the Chelmsford Schools that actually qualify for free or reduced lunch. Uh, and we provide their breakfast and lunch for them each day. That's almost one out of five kids in the uh, school department. So one of our concerns, and I think this is a statewide concern, is that um, we need to maintain uh, in my opinion, uh, services to these students because this is an incredibly difficult time for any, uh, but particularly if you have additional uh, needs and demands uh, on your home, that it can be uh, really challenging. Who's got the dog?
That's 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 Abby's dog, yeah.
Uh, I was, as a side note, we were in a conference call yesterday and animals would pop in and out of the screen uh, during the time, so it happens. Where was I? What was I talking about? So the food, um, the food outreach. So we're a district that actually our free and reduced lunch count overall is less than 50%. So we don't qualify out of the gates for uh, to operate like a summer feeding program or free and reduced lunch site like other communities similar to um, Lowellwood because their numbers are above. But again, on the superintendent calls, uh, we really do want to maintain uh, and provide for our families. So one of the things that we have done, uh, hoping to eventually be able to file for reimbursement um, is utilize our food service staff to provide meals uh, for our community in need. Now, our target audience is um, our students, particularly we've been pushing uh, information out to our free and reduced lunch students. But uh, I've taken the tact and I've uh, expressed that I don't want to turn anyone away um, who comes to our site who's in need of a meal at this time. Particularly that free, you know, again, this is just my perspective, but particularly that free and reduced lunch um, students and a lot of our families, you know, have employees, uh, have parents who are our employees. Um, they might work in the service industry. Um, they may be laid off or they've already been laid off. And I think it's, it was challenging enough to try to provide food. It's going to be even more challenging in the days and weeks and, you know, months to come, depending on how this all plays out. Um, so I wanted to kind of do our part in continuing to provide for those families. Our food service and school nutrition staff really stepped up. Um, we had some meetings and decided to offer a uh, kind of a satellite site out of our high school. Um, so our food service staff are coming in and they're actually producing uh, meals. Right now, we're using product that we already had on hand uh, to be able to produce them. Um, but breakfast options, lunch options, dinner options. And then we've opened up between 4:30 and 6 o'clock, um, a kind of a um, curbside pickup at the uh, high school where again, families can come and pick up uh, meals for their uh, students. Uh, again, our target audiences are free and reduced lunch students, but we are uh, not turning anyone away if they come to that uh, to that site. The first night it was opened was Wednesday. We actually had just shy of um, 200 uh, students participate in the program, which I thought was great. This really all came together over like a 24 to 48 hour period. So we were still making plans over the weekend for this, and we didn't really start uh, pushing the flyers until Monday. So to get that kind of a response, you know, within two days, I thought was significant. And I think it's also telling uh, to just the need that's there in our community. So I'm, I'm happy that we can step up and uh, provide for that. Again, at this particular time on that program, I don't have any particular need or ask from the school committee because we're utilizing our existing resources. And in hopes of eventually being able to get reimbursed by the government sometime if there is some legislation that allows. There could be a point in the future where if we're not getting reimbursement uh, from the government and, you know, we're quantifying expenses for this program, I would likely recommend to you uh, that we continue to operate the program at, you know, X cost. I don't know what that would be, but to continue to provide for our families. And then we would need to pay for that through our um, through our budget. Again, I don't have any asks right now. Uh, personally, I just think it's um, the right thing to do to uh, to support our families. Um, I would ask for you to to support me if if I do bring in a recommendation to allocate some money to that cause. Um, but I think that is going to be significant to uh, to help our community in the coming days and weeks. Um, and again, to already out of the gate, have a couple hundred on that first day was really significant. And I'll be curious tonight where it's a um, you know, the weather is obviously better and it's warmer. Uh, what type of turnout we'll get for the weekend. Um, we're operating the program Monday through Friday, uh, so five days a week. And when you come, you only have to come once a day. Uh, you technically can get uh, your three meals for the next day. Um, at that site. So we've gotten very good uh, very good feedback on that. Um, in addition to that feeding program, one of the other things that we're going to have our staff start to do, um, particularly our counseling staff, our school nurse staff, uh, maybe even like say our psychologist staff. They obviously work with some of our needier families in the schools during the course of the um, the school year, and they have families in in need uh, that they've identified. Um, so part of their work next week, when they uh, start to make family contacts will be to use kind of a screening protocol and to figure out if uh, number one, inform families about this feeding site. But there are also families that might need additional support or additional services. Um, so we are going to partner with a couple of different entities um, within town. Um, the food bank, uh, the Table of Plenty, which helps out uh, quite a bit uh, in town. To be able to, if a family is screened in through our staff that might need additional uh, non-perishable food items on um, say even over the weekend to help them out, uh, that we're going to operate a um, uh, center out of the Harrington School uh, where people can drop off uh, food items if they'd like to. Another group will come in and actually help us um, pack up uh, boxes uh, to be distributed to homes. And then likely on Friday, uh, we'll actually have people deliver the boxes to the homes of the families. The we've, I've asked and I've had some communication with the PTOs and the council of schools to kind of rally and and have some people support us around uh, providing some extra food offerings. And I think that's going to be a great way for people in the community to help if they want to. Uh, I've been working with uh, Mary Moriarty and her group are going to help actually help with the packing and the some uh, assembly of the boxes uh, during the course of the week. So that's going to be really helpful. And then in talks with that transportation company, they obviously have a captive audience of bus drivers who aren't being used right now because we don't have school. Uh, I'm going to work and try to contract with them to actually pick up the boxes of food at the school and then do the drop offs to the home on Friday. Um, so I think that's really a great project that is still in the infancy. Uh, it's going to get launched next week. But um, just another step for us to be kind of helping the community. Again, no real ask on your part at this point. I don't need funding or anything like that. Uh, but just letting you know that that's another level of planning that's actually taking place behind the scenes to make sure that when our counseling staff are actually interacting with families, if there's a need there, uh, we're going to try to take care of those needs. Uh, and I'll be able to report out the uh, progress on that at uh, future, future meetings as well.
Nancy, uh, Antolini's been doing a phenomenal job. Um, just terrific her and her staff. I was there um, Wednesday night and uh, it was a a very uh, constant flow of people coming and um, they were right on top of everything and uh, gracious and welcoming and I really don't have enough great things to say about them. Um, and a little shout out to Bob from the food pantry, and I'm sorry I don't know his last name, but he's also been very helpful in terms of uh, coordinating um, efforts with us.
Yeah, they have the the whole school nutrition group uh, led by Nancy has been uh, super in uh, trying to step up on this. And they're, you know, one of our employee groups that are really um, even though a lot of people are working offsite uh, this week, you know, they're in the school uh, preparing the meals, uh, they're going to help with distribution. I'm heading over a little bit this afternoon. We're going to do some uh, home deliveries to some families that we've previously supported, just to check on and bring them some um, food to help get them through the weekend. So uh, they have gone above and beyond. I can't say enough uh, good things about the support that they're doing and uh, keeping us going. The other uh, kind of another unsung hero group in all of this is um, you know, Brian Gurley and the Custodians. Uh, the facilities group, another group that's been in the schools all week. The Facilities Group, another group that's been in the schools all week, doing deep cleaning, met with them on Monday morning for a little kind of kickoff meeting. We had the contractor cleaners in as well and a real concerted effort over these, this school closure to again, do some deep cleanings, some disinfecting in the schools. With some of the downtime, they're even getting to some projects that were on the back burner in the school. So that will be ongoing. And that's a group that also has stepped up and has said they'll do whatever they can and need to, to, to help us through this. And, you know, physically being on site and, and helping out. So I very much appreciate their support and work as well.
So Jay, for the food part, those children that received a backpack some Fridays from Harrington.
Right.
Is that a group that they've identified and were reaching out to directly?
Yeah. So there's, there's two things going on. The Harrington School was piloting a backpack program this fall. So they had identified twenty-five families that could really use support on the weekends to be able to provide some additional non-perishable items to assist the families. So that has been ongoing and there's, there's twenty-five families that receive that weekly support. Students basically go home with a backpack full of food to help them through the weekend. We didn't want to forget about those twenty-five families that have kind of been relying on this. So that's a little later on this afternoon, Nancy and her group actually have produced food for the weekend. Rob Assle, the principal Harrington and myself are going to go and actually make deliveries to the homes just so that they have that to, to kind of help them through this first weekend. But then those twenty-five families will be fed into the larger program for a week from now. Because even though we were piloting this at the Harrington, we know that there are families in all the other schools that may need support. So when our counseling staff and nursing staff identify who those families might be, they're going to be put into a list. And basically, next week, if we're providing twenty-five today, maybe it's going to be forty, it could be fifty, it could be a hundred. But that's going to be the work that we do with the, that satellite site out of Harrington to be able to, to provide some non-perishable items. Again, the Table of Plenty group will help us pack them. And I'm hoping that our bus drivers will help us actually with that distribution. So we have.
Reaching out who want to be volunteers. So if you need it, but at this point with social distancing and all this stuff. But if you need it, you just let me know because I can give you some names. I have another question. It doesn't have to do with food, but a particular group in our organization. So I'm thinking in terms of psychologists and guidance counselors. If they're working with a particular student at this time, is there part of next week's rollout here that you're planning to do with staff? Are they going to have a regular touch base with this particular student who might actually be in greater need at this time of some counseling and some guidance?
I hear what you're saying. It is. I mean, so we did have a conference call with Lorraine Wilson, our coordinator for SEL and Counseling, Peggy Gump, our school nurse coordinator, and also Amy Reese, our Special Education Director, earlier this week to talk about the specific roles, different individuals in the districts are going to play. Similar to see classroom teachers will be reaching out to their own students to check on them and, and whatnot. Our counselors are going to be being able to, you know, call or remotely talk to their kind of caseload, school psychologists and, you know, nurses as well. Yes. And what I'm thinking is going to happen is some of the screening protocol that they're putting together right now might actually surface as a student or a family that needs some, say nutritional support during this time. So they could then get referred to our program. Some might just need, you know, that person to talk to or the counseling services. So that can be provided as well. That is all in the works. Very similar to a classroom teacher talking to their kids. The counseling staff and psychologists will be talking to their, their students.
And Jay, you know, I'm glad that we're doing this and I think it's absolutely necessary, but I do want to make sure that, you know, our staff are taking the necessary precautions because we don't want them end up getting sick as a result of, you know, trying to, and support, to help and support, you know, families throughout the community.
Right. Well, I can tell you even like on the, the food program, you know, the Wednesday night was the first night and, you know, everyone is just trying to be supportive. But, you know, we, we did even make some changes yesterday where Joanna and Nancy had talked. So the, you know, the food is, it's a curbside pickup. A car comes down. People are actually now, you know, instead of us putting food in the car for them, they're parking and they're coming to take the food off the table. So we're limiting contact with families. When we do the drop offs today, you know, the families have been notified that we're dropping off the food, but it's going to be left on the doorstep and then they're going to come out and get it. We're not going into the homes to bring the food to just kind of keep that contact minimal. So we realize that there's a service that has to be provided and I think it's valuable service. But we are taking the precautions to be able to keep our staff as safe as they can be.
I want to tell you last night I went by the site to just thank everybody. And we waved and thanked each other from, and said hello from cars. They are really adhering to it. And they, they said they felt safe in the way that it's being done.
Yeah, I think they, I think they feel very good about providing the service too. But they are taking necessary precautions to protect their own safety and their families too. That is the only way we're going to stop the, the spread of this.
Any other questions on food program?
As far as kind of updates, that's, that's what I have right now. I had mentioned to Dennis just jokingly last night, we're, we're really not getting a lot of real work done in the district with regard to, you know, our, a lot of the dates and timelines for required submissions have been pushed off. You know, our Student Opportunity Act proposal is pushed off now till May. So that will come to you at a future date. You know, we're still waiting to see what's going to happen. Our MSBA application got pushed off to May, so I'm still fine tuning that. So we had a couple of kind of procedural votes we were going to need to take around documents. But we're now just a couple of weeks behind because our real focus the last two weeks has only been on kind of the remediation in our planning around this school closure. So within the next couple of weeks, we'll get back to regular business. It has really just been all hands on deck, both remotely and in the office, dealing with the school closure. Again, in week one, really just trying to provide for the, the essential needs of our students and staff. You know, the health and safety type needs. And then we will start to refocus and refocus on learning next week.
Any questions?
Yes, meetings. Are we going to discuss that or? So I have a scheduled meeting coming up for the Custodians. Thing is that still on or is it going to be like this?
Yeah, the only date, so it's an option for you. The only meeting that we actually have scheduled right now, bargaining wise, is the Custodians. It was supposed to be a face-to-face meeting for our initial kickoff and exchange of proposals on Monday. They reached out today and said they would still like to move forward with the meeting. They could either do it remotely and there's a way to remote in if you're not available or not comfortable in person. Or they're in the district working anyway. So they're here. They said we could meet in person as well. They weren't opposed to that. So that meeting is still scheduled to go off on Monday. That subcommittee is Maria and John. So I will forward you the, the information. And you guys can just tell me if you'd like to come in person. I'm going to be here in the office anyway, so I'll meet with them in person, anyone from their side that wants to. You can either join me in person or you, I can remote you into the meeting and we can do that as well.
So as of right now, I, I would like to come in person because I'd like to meet them in person.
Shake their hands.
Right.
Yeah, we just make this ample distance between people. That's all.
And they're the best group to meet with. They're the cleaning people.
Right. But I'll, I'll email you and you'll have that option. But I think it, that's our one group that doesn't have a contract in place right now. So I do think it makes sense to try to keep the ball rolling on that. And once things do quiet down, I can actually expend a little bit of time on trying to pull that together.
Okay. And how about our meeting? Next Tuesday?
We do have a, a regular meeting scheduled for next Tuesday evening. I spoke with Dennis earlier today and we did post the meeting as an in-person meeting at the school department. We really only have two pieces of business. One is just some budget transfers that we'll send to you. And then one is just the personnel report. Other than that, I don't have anything substantive other than possibly some updates between now and Tuesday of what's happening statewide with the whole closure situation. So I did just put these same items on the agenda for Tuesday night. So we could touch base again and just kind of inform the community of what we're doing. So to that point, Dennis, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, you know, so we, we had to schedule a meeting. We had to get it posted today. So I, I think it was best that we, we kept it on as is. And, you know, again, just like the negotiations, I mean, if, if people want, feel comfortable coming in, we can definitely, you know, maintain our social distance. If, if you're more comfortable joining via the computer like we are here, that's fine. But I, I think, you know, having the meeting face-to-face, having some of us there, at least we can have Chelmsford Cable broadcasting it live and we can get that, this information out again to people that maybe don't know we're meeting right now on, on the computer. I don't know how many people are aware that we're, we're actually having this meeting. You know, I know it was posted and everything else, but, you know, unless you go and saw the agenda, you probably wouldn't do that. And I actually had somebody reach out and I know Jeff also spoke to this individual who was concerned about the fact that, that, you know, this technology, they weren't able to access the meeting and, and that type of thing. So, I mean, as long as it's still permissible, I would like to continue to have the meeting on, on Tuesday. I don't know if other people have different thoughts on that or not or.
I would like to meet on Tuesday, but I, I do want to say that, you know, I think we have to be good role models for, you know, social distancing. And I don't, you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't, I don't want to implicitly give the message that it's okay for people to be gathering for meetings and whatnot because it really isn't, you know? So I think we have to be mindful of that.
And I don't think if we do it is a couple of things. First of all, I don't think we should do it face-to-face at all, but if we're going to do it, we should probably consider rearranging the tables. I do have outbursts people in my life and I'm sure there are other people of the same way. And the other thing is I don't think the public should come. I think you should be setting example on this. I haven't left my house to go anywhere. So but that's just my opinion.
I, I agree. Yeah, I agree on the public, you know, and I think we could post it that way that if people want to, you know, have participation to, to email in sort of like it here. I, I would definitely not open it to public. I would keep it to this, you know, this small group. And again, if you're not comfortable coming, then we can definitely arrange something like this, you know, so we could have some people that are there in person and, and some people that would join electronically. I mean.
I think we just, I think if we just spread the table out and, you know, people sit away from each other. I mean, that would.
I agree. It's a fairly large room. So I think.
Okay, there isn't, we don't do this at our meetings, but at some of the PTO's meetings we do, where you can actually have this also on Facebook and so on. So I don't know if you want to give that option to the public. They can, they can join in this way, like we are, instead of being there and making comments in person. I don't know if you want to look into that.
Yeah. What I've seen more for like municipal meetings is typically if the meeting is televised, so like if telemedia is televising the meeting and it's live. I have seen groups do like a, an email that would go to a particular email address and then the email gets read because it's more not for their participation, but for their comment. The other thing I have seen is districts will set up like a conference call phone. So if someone wanted to physically call, they could call and then their comments would just be stated at the meeting instead of physically sitting there. I think that's something that we could possibly pull off. I don't know if the live streaming of like the Facebook meeting might be a little redundant with the telemedia already televising the meeting. But maybe, maybe.
A call-in is a good idea.
I can check on that. We can probably work that out by Monday.
And providing that in the agenda notice.
What is the municipal side doing, Jay?
They're canceling all meetings. We were supposed to actually present FinCom Thursday night, but FinCom didn't hold the meeting. And I know when I last talked to Paul, he was indicating unless there was significant business to be taken, that the municipal meetings were canceled. So when I looked at the docket, like for the, the week that we're in now, everything basically was canceled. So I think we can go ahead with Tuesday. It'll be largely an update type meeting similar today. And then maybe the public will find that reassuring to just kind of know where we're at, what information we have for them. But I might be trying to work with people here at Central Office too, to just figure out another way to be able to put some kind of like a video message out weekly, like the state of the schools type thing, just so that the public can, can know what's going on. I, I'll give that some thought as well.
I think it's fluid. I mean, if, if situation changed between now and Tuesday, then we can all obviously switch gears if we have to.
Right.
Excuse me, I have my hand up, but you can't see it. That's the only person in the over sixty group. I have no problem with coming into the meeting. You know, as long as we have the social distance, it will be fine.
Donna, you're pretty close.
I knew it was coming. Thanks.
All right.
To that point, I just don't know, because we weren't able to see Jeff had anything to, to say or add about anything that we're doing.
No, everything's fine. You're doing a great job.
Thank you for all the work.
Now, we've, it's really, it's been district-wide. Anyone that we've asked to do anything has stepped forward, which is wonderful. I think people are looking to help in some way. So we're going to, you know, keep the communication open. Central Office, you know, has kept us common with all the day-to-day operations. And our larger admin group and school group have been fantastic. So it's just, it's going to be a trying couple of weeks. We just want each other. I'll try to be as consistent and communicate as I can with the direction, kind of where we're going. But, you know, we'll, we'll get through this. It's just a different time. I think, but everyone has been super supportive and we're just dealing with real needs right now. And then we're going to start to refocus and re, refocus our attention next week to, to the continued learning.
All right. Anybody have anything else before we wrap this up?
Just one thing in terms of action and new items. I do think it's important that at some point down the road that we reach out to our representatives and Senator and let them know about some of the costs that we're incurring as a result of this particular action that's been taken by the governor. You know, for example, I, I agree, Jay, I think that we do have to continue that the providing food for the, for families who are in need. But I, I think that it's important that they understand, you know, like, you know, what the ramifications are for school districts across the state. You know, when they undertake things like this and there isn't any form of reimbursement for us. So I do think that, you know, like I said, I think it's important that we just, you know, be mindful of, we're obviously we're not having the day on the hill, but I think at some point, you know, when this is over and done, that we do need to, to reach out and say, you know, you know, this is an example again of how Chelmsford, you know, ends up being kind of shortchanged because we just fall into this weird area where we don't necessarily qualify for things, but still have to provide the services.
Yeah, we are quantifying everything related to this particular closure so that we will have hard numbers in the event that, you know, we're going to try to push some legislation to be able to qualify for our, say, free lunch reimbursement. So we will have that all quantified and be able to share that with our reps and senators. There certainly is going to need to be a legislative advocacy piece here. Because this has happened now once. We want to, you know, make sure that we had everything in line. God forbid something like this happened again in the future.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we do need to do a roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Okay, Maria?
Yay.
Jeff?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Donna?
Hi.
Hi. Five zero.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I hope everyone stays healthy and well. I am going to stop the recording on this meeting and then we will work to get this up on our website this afternoon and over to telemedia as well so that they can post it for the public.
Right.
Thank you.
Great weekend, everyone.
You too.